Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order. The Columbia Heights Independent School District 13 Regular School Board Meeting of Tuesday, November 26, 2013. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, Laura, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Landwehr?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Bardell?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Thank you very much. Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our next item is Agenda Approval: Adjustments Analysis Correspondence. I have a motion for the agenda.
They'll move.
Motion by Missy, second by Lori. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion is carried. Thank you. November 28th, 29th, Thanksgiving holiday, the district's office is closed. December 10th, Tuesday, 5:00 p.m. is a Subcommittee on Policy meeting in the Superintendent's Conference Room. December 10th, Tuesday, 7:00 p.m. is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. December 23rd to January 3rd is the winter break, no school. January 6th is a Monday, and school resumes. Superintendent Kelly, correspondence?
Mr. Chair members, there's none at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Our next agenda item is Communication to the Board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address school board. The board will listen to brief remarks as clarifying questions, and if desired, ask the administration to follow up. However, the board will not take action. It's a meeting on request presented at this time. Anyone like to come before the board? Anyone? Okay. Since no one looks like they want to come to the board, we will move on to our Consent Agenda, which this evening consists of a personnel report. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move that forward.
Motion by Missy, second by Laura. Discussion on Consent Agenda. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Next is Acknowledgement of Contributions. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the peoples thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent District, Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background, the amount of $4,021.65. Monetary donations. A donation of $237 was made to Valley View Elementary by Target Corp. for student needs. A donation of 20... is that right? 20 cents? Was made to Valley View Elementary by Scouted Inc. for student needs. Donation of $6 was made to Valley View Elementary by Shaft's Inc. for student needs. A donation amount of $197 was made to Columbia Heights High School by Target Corp. for student needs. Donation $142 was made to North Park Elementary by Target Corp. for student needs. Donation of $2,499.45 was made to Valley View Elementary by Valley View PTO for six Apple iPads. Donation of $50 was made to Valley View Elementary by Heidi Comer-Hodge for student needs. A donation of $10 was made to Valley View Elementary by Jennifer Holick for student needs. Filing donations were made to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. Bernice Danko, $50. Value and Kind. Donation of two bikes to Valley View Elementary from Stan and Don Hoyam. Estimated value, $100. Donation of school supplies to Valley View Elementary from Mark M. Emmy. Estimated value, $125. Donation of coats, hats, and mittens to North Park Elementary from St. Phillips Church. Estimated value of $505. Donation of five winter jackets to Highland Elementary from David D. Jarnett Agency. Estimated value of $100. Total fiscal year 2013-2014 monetary contributions to date, $17,424.35. Do I have a motion to move?
They'll move.
Motion by Ted, second by Laura. Discussion. Is resolution, Laura?
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Landwehr?
Aye.
Mr. Larkin?
Aye.
Mr. Bardell?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution has passed. All right. Reports from member of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. And I will start with Ms. Lee.
I was at the work session, also the football banquet, and also some basket... the start of the basketball games.
All right. Very good. Ms. Meyer?
I attended the MSBA Pre-Delegate Assembly and re-reviewed, quickly reviewed at a high level all of the proposals, proposed resolutions that we'll be voting on at the upcoming Delegate Assembly for the MSBA Legislative Session next year. I was also at the work session and the Metro EXU Combined Executive Annual Meeting, and so got to learn a lot about the different programs that they have over there and meet the executive committee and learn about some of the things that we participate in through them, like the Principal's Academy and the Future City Competition and the Knowledge Bowl. It was very interesting. It was a fun evening, so that's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Landwehr?
I also attended the work session and attended the MSBA Minnesota School Board Association Pre-Delegate Assembly. It looks like three of us brought their books today. We have, if anyone wants to look at the various resolutions that they're contemplating, it'd be great to get input from the rest of the board. And then we'll actually have the Delegate Assembly on December 6th and 7th coming up, so where we actually vote on the resolutions. And then I also attended the, or actually spoke with Director Burkas about the last National School Board Association Conference and shared materials with him and ideas, and hopefully he can use those ideas to better the district. And then I also attended Chamber and Lions Meetings.
Good. Mr. Larkin?
I had an opportunity to see the high school play, I believe it was called Second Chance.
Second Class.
Second Class? Okay. That was a great play. It was very interesting. I think they had 28 different...
Vineyards.
One of them. Anyway, they actually were present... I don't know if that's correct terminology, but anyway, it was interesting nonetheless. They brought up a lot of different things that, you know, students run into in school, anything from bullying to first loves to... it just, it was, it was very entertaining. They did a really nice job with that. I also had an opportunity to attend the high school band and choir concert. Again, very entertaining. I have to say, the choir director is a very enthusiastic gentleman that the kids really, really seem to love, and it was just, it was, it was really fun to watch, and the band did a great job as well. I was able to attend the Columbia Academy Parents Breakfast this last Friday. Some of the information we received at the work session was shared with the parents there. I thought that was very enjoyable. And then I was again at the work session last week.
All right. Thanks. Ms. Palmer?
My turn. Let me see. Well, I did attend the work session last week, and I also attended, Principal Bussman also gave us a tour of some of the various programs, which a lot of us were able to attend, you know, which, which was very interesting to see how, how far along they're coming on in the... is anybody hearing me? I'm sorry. The engineering courses and the different programs with the new art, the art labs and some of the, some of the stuff that's going on there. We could've spent all day there learning about all the, all the, all the good things that are happening. So I really appreciate that tour, and I hope maybe perhaps we can do that again. So that's pretty much it for me.
All right. Thank you very much. I also was on the tour prior to the work session, and I agree, it's always good to get a firsthand view of what our schools are doing, and lots of good stuff going on, certainly at the academy. And I was also at the band and choir concert, and I agree with John, John, Member Larkin, that, that the choir and, and the band concert were both very good, and, and, you know, good things happening in our band and choir department, so. Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair members, Principal DeWitt and Director Stunkel and Highland teacher Jen Blake and I were part of a team that, along with North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale, presented at the AMSD Fall Conference. Our topic was all-day, everyday kindergarten. It was, the whole conference was focused on early learning, and it was the biggest conference AMSD has had yet. There were over 250 participating, and I want to say special thanks to Michelle and Kristen and Jen for being a part of it all. Director Holmgren and I participated in pre-meetings with the, on the audit, with the auditing firm in preparation for the information that you'll be seeing tonight, and it was very, it was a summative meeting, and it was very useful and informative. Director Holmgren and Mahan and I attended a full-day school finance study session, and it really focused on levy referendum. It was sponsored by the Springstead Corporation, and we brought, are bringing back things back to the admin team, and we'll be bringing some things to the board in 2014 from that workshop. The Technology Alignment Design Team met for an evening session focused on career and college readiness pathways and the P-21 Framework and Technology Alignment. Chair Bardell and Director Burkas and I attended Minnesota Department of Education World's Best Workforce Study Session to clarify expectations on the requirements for 2017, the 2017 Plan. This will be subject of work-study sessions starting in January at the board level, so we wanted to make sure that we at least were hearing what was going on from the state as they were enrolling it out. I attended the Northeast Metro 916 Superintendent Advisory Meeting, and the focus of this meeting was the District Management Team, DMC, is conducting a report on special education, of which our district is participating, along with nine others. And so all 10 districts were represented, and the team received a preliminary report, and they're not done. They're, we will have another joint meeting in January with both the superintendents and the directors. Once we have the final report, we'll bring that to the board. It's really taking an in-depth look on special education, except for the Moundsview School District. They're doing something on middle-level education, and so we'll be sharing their report, too. I attended the AMSD Executive Board Meeting where we were working on the platform and going over evaluations from the conference. The mayor's taste of Columbia Heights was a great success on Friday night. It was filled to the gills with people eating. They almost ran out of food, I think. I think Don Hoyam got the last cupcake. That's what she was, told me at any rate. So congratulations to the mayor on that. I did enjoy the high, the high school fall play, and Member Larkin and the audience were very well behaved, and the students were outstanding. MSBA Delegate Assembly, as you've mentioned, is coming up, and as is the tradition, when a member requests admin to look at some of the resolutions, we've done it for Member Palmer, and I believe Member Landwehr in the past, I'm not quite sure, but I know we've done it. Member Lee brought us in the book, and so Bill and I reviewed some of the, well, all of the proposals, and because I'm not doing an update this week, I'm just going to take the liberty of passing them out to you, just in case you would like an admin perspective on those. And so those are for your attention. I've had individual meetings and phone calls with school board members, and I want to thank you all for your time. And last but not least, the Metropolitan Council will be here in this room at 7:00 on December 11th. This is really a contact through the city. Metropolitan Council hasn't been in the city of Columbia Heights for feedback for a while, and they have their Thrive 2040 Plan that I mentioned in my update to the board last week. And so at least three representatives from that organization will be out, and we'll be hosting it here, and if you're, if you have the time, both the public, because they would like the public to come, and the board, please show up. We've, we're very welcome to have it here in the community room.
What time was that?
And that's at 7:00 p.m. on December 11th, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Our next item on our agenda this evening is Creating Successful Early Learning and All-Day Kindergarten Programs, and tonight we have Kristen Stunkel and Michelle DeWitt.
Good evening, Chair Bardell, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Thank you for allowing us to come this evening to present the activities that we've been involved with this fall in moving forward with this three-year-to-third-grade transition time that, that we've been going to a lot of conferences and being able to participate in some presentations on. We'll start off with our first slide, which is our title, Creating Successful Early Learning and All-Day Kindergarten Programs. It's been wonderful to work with, with Principal DeWitt on this project. Our second slide reviews our mission, and, sorry, that's okay. And in looking at that slide, the highlighted words, "Creating Worlds of Opportunity, Partnership, Discover Potential, and Success," those all seemed really apropos. We're talking about our early learning and moving into all-day K. Our next slide is a reminder of our core values as a district. And then we'll move towards two of the programs that Principal DeWitt, Superintendent Kelly, and I have been able to participate in. The first one's Creating Successful Early Learning and All-Day Kindergarten Programs. That was an all-day presentation in September that was sponsored by the Minnesota Office of Early Learning and the National Governors' Associations Policy Forum on Raising Third-Grade Reading Proficiency, and they were really looking at starting at early childhood through third grade. Then the second, the second program that we attended and participated in was the one that Superintendent Kelly already mentioned, and we were very pleased to be able to present along with ISD 622 North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale. It was really fun to collaborate with them on talking about how our two districts, in already having established the all-day K, have been able to support the teachers and the families and the community and the students in making that transition as, as a model. So that was really a fun presentation to be able to work in collaboration with that other district on. This is one of the slides that MDE presented, and it really shows how that birth to three, the crucial brain development that's being established in that time, and we, as you're very familiar with our ECFE program and our home visiting program, support that. Then we move into that pre-K for three- and four-year-olds. There again, we've presented on, on this, but our program is very strong and is located in, at North Park and Highland in our incubators, and then also here at the Family Center. Then we move towards that five-year-olds, the full-day kindergarten, which is that transition year from the early childhood into the rigor of elementary school. And then the grades one through three, and that's really making sure that, that, that strong foundation that was established continues forward.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to cover a few slides about our learning side of attending the two conferences. The first slide is about neuroplasticity, and, which is very difficult to say, which is how our brains grow and the developments of our brains, especially during the preschool years. Part of the learning that we had attending the two conferences, we learned about when you grow as a preschooler, it's easier to learn something first the right way than unlearn bad habits. And neuroplasticity really focuses on growing the brain in particular ways by using them in particular ways, so really highlighting the importance of strong early childhood programming leading into elementary school. The next slide articulates a study in the 1960s at Perry Preschool, and this, or this study has been replicated multiple times, and really the gist of this slide is that the brain grows most rapidly in the first five years, so investing in preschool pays off in the end. So you'll see kind of a net gain of $127,000, some odd dollars. This study was, as I said, originally done in 1960, replicated multiple times by Heckman and Barnett. The preschool was in Michigan. They selected very specific students. They were students that came from poverty or had learning needs, could've been special education, but really targeted as disadvantaged students, and they followed these particular students for 40 years. So they were looking at factors of, did they attend college? Did they commit any crimes? Were they on welfare? They looked at productivity. Were they able to find jobs? What type of jobs? Were they college graduates, et cetera? And the, this, the graph on the left-hand side articulates that the rate of investment with these students has paid off. So there's reduced crime, higher percentage of students attending college, et cetera.
So a couple of the early childhood programs that I wanted to highlight this evening that help with that transition from early childhood into kindergarten. We're continuing our Bridges to Kindergarten Program. That's that three-week program during the summer. Something that we're adding this spring are kinder prep meetings that our pre-K teachers will be having, either separately or adding on to their parent-teacher conferences that they have in the spring, to talk specifically with parents in their pre-K fours program about what can, what kind of activities they can do during the summer to continue to ready their child for kindergarten. And then we're, we're looking forward to potential expansion in, in days or hours of our program next year to really continue to bolster that experience of early childhood for success of our students.
Excuse me. This slide we shared a few times prior to the last, the AMSD Conference. We also shared when we were lobbying last spring, or last winter, at the Capitol for all-day kindergarten for all school districts. The slide articulates the difference between what a half-day schedule looked like for kindergarten pre-2000 and what a typical full-day schedule looks like now in Columbia Heights. So obviously, we're able to provide lunch, breakfast for our students. All of our kindergartners participate in art, music, physical education. There's time for writing, social studies, science, health, all of the extras that we wouldn't be able to get in a half-day program. Some pieces that we're really looking at with our full-day schedule to enhance our opportunities for preschoolers coming in. A lot of the early learning work now at the legislature is really looking at pre-K, and it's looking at whether our preschoolers are ready to enter the rigorous programming of all-day kindergarten. So a lot of the work that we've, sorry, the work that we've been doing is looking at pre-K and K alignment, so it's having a common language between our preschool teachers and preschool programs with our kindergarten teachers, having a shared definition of what kindergarten readiness looks like and what that sounds like. So those of you that have experienced kindergartners going recently know what this is all about, whether or not your child is ready for K. Curriculum integration, so having that seamless transition between our pre-K programs going into kindergarten. An important piece that we do now is we have responsive classroom in our elementary schools, so we have responsive classroom in our pre-K classes as well. We look at having shared language for our curricular standards. We also look at having common elements of data collection. We certainly collect a lot of data in kindergarten about where our students enter and how they progress through the school year, but we also collect a lot of information about where our preschoolers are at and, and where they need to be to be ready for this rigorous all-day kindergarten. And the last piece that I, I feel that we really articulate, or was really articulated at the last conference that we attended was shared staff development. So it was making sure that pre-K and kindergarten teachers have the opportunity to participate in staff development together as a common team, and that we have very specific, or staff development that provides opportunities for the teachers to collaborate. The last slide is just to give you an opportunity to see, these, these pictures are at Highland, so this is obviously in our new kindergarten classroom. Just to kind of see the room in youth, you've had the opportunity to visit empty classrooms, but you'll notice the kids at, sitting on the circle and the letters, having their morning meeting. So it's an opportunity also for the kids to share a greeting in the lower right-hand corner and upper left-hand corner, and then the use of the preme, or Promethean board in the lower left. So really utilizing the space that we have. Questions?
Questions? Comments?
No, just, our kids are extremely photogenic.
I agree.
Yeah. Just a comment that, you know, the, the research showing that school success is based on the ability of students to read well by the third grade. So this, this makes a lot of sense. If we can start them out young and make sure that they're able to reach that goal, it's likely they will reach that college readiness by the time they are ready out of high school.
We had a, we had a couple of presentations, and really to, to save time, we couldn't add in everything that we learned about over two full days, but Anoka Henepin and Bloomington Richfield presented about early learning opportunities that they're providing in their school districts, and it was really, really solid research showing statistically significant data of improvement. So they looked at not only how far did the preschoolers get, but then they tracked the preschoolers into kindergarten to see were they, were they more ready to learn the kindergarten skills? And obviously, the data showed that. So these were very specific students targeted for attending these programs, so kids that would typically be disadvantaged through poverty or lack of preschool exposure. And then looking at, by gaining some of the skills in preschool, were they ready, more ready for the kindergarten programming?
Yep. Thanks. The only comment I had was, wow. I mean, I, I can barely remember last year, let alone when I was in kindergarten, but I know I was doing nothing anywhere near anything like that, so, you know, I, I know the times have changed, and those are, we're following data dri, we're making data-driven decisions. As Member Landwehr said, you know, the data consistently show if we have reading skills by third grade, that, that is the important benchmark right there, and this certainly is a way to do that, and so I, great work, nice presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I just, I just have one comment, too. I'm glad to see that we have writing incorporated into the kindergarten. It's, it's extremely important, also, I know, to be able to teach the kids how to be able to express themselves adequately, and a lot of that comes from being able to write down their ideas and expression, so starting them at a younger age is, it makes, it makes a huge amount of sense.
We're, we're actually doing the same in our pre-K program. We have writer's workshop in pre-K as well.
Wow. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda this evening, the board will be presented with information on the Columbia Academy Spanish Class Field Trip. We have Dwayne Burkas, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Marie Nelson, Columbia Academy teacher. Welcome.
Hi. Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, I'm very pleased to be here tonight with Marie Nelson, our English learner and Spanish teacher at Columbia Academy. Been down at Columbia Academy a lot the last month, and been really fun to hear Ms. Nelson's name come up so many different places, talking with kids. Tell us about classrooms that you really enjoy, that you really learn a lot. Can't tell you how many times Ms. Nelson's name came up, talking to our coordinators. Tell me which classroom you really think we could bring our teachers to, to learn from and see good teaching, Ms. Nelson. So here's Ms. Nelson, my opportunity to, to tell you that, too, tonight, with her dedication to teaching and to our kids, and this idea, again, right above your heads there in our mission that says that we provide worlds of opportunity. mission that says that we provide worlds of opportunity to our students. And with a proposal here tonight that I'd like her to have a chance to talk to you about for an opportunity for our kids.
Well, thank you, Director Burkas. Good evening, school board members. Thank you for leaving a slot in your agenda for me. There's a lot of things on here, but I appreciate the time. I would like to make a short proposal to you, just have a few slides here, but I am very excited with the opportunity, pending your approval, to take forty of my students in eighth-grade Spanish to Concordia Language Villages this spring. And it, the weekend would be March four, it is a weekend-long trip, would be March fourteenth through March sixteenth, which is the first weekend of spring break. For those of you who don't know, well, sorry, do this one first. For those of you who don't know Concordia Language Villages or don't know much about it, it is a very well-known language immersion program that offers a variety of immersion experiences for students. There are summer-long camps, there are week-long camps, there are family weekends, there are student weekends, which is what I am proposing to participate in. My proposal is that I would take forty eighth-grade Spanish I students, these are beginning Spanish students, to this Concordia Language Villages in Bemidji. That would involve myself as a chaperone and lead teacher, and I would also be requesting two adult chaperones per the requirement of Concordia Language Villages. The cost of this trip, actually for what they're getting, is not a lot, but I know you see the numbers. It is a hundred and fifty-seven dollars per student plus transportation, which is a total of almost seven thousand dollars. However, we will be doing fundraising. I have talked with some booster members who are very experienced in this category, and they have given me some, some good advice and some very good ideas. Selling calendars from the boosters, which I have been a part of at our volleyball program, when I was coaching, we also sold these calendars, and I know that they're very effective and very profitable as well. We would have the opportunity for parents to help run meet raffles at Miller's. That would be mainly a parent event. If the student wanted to come with them, that would be their choice. We thought about having at the basketball, middle-school basketball games at Columbia Academy, you know, for example, a student could buy three, three shots for a dollar, and then for each shot they made, they could have their name put into a raffle. Movie-thon, which is where we would watch Spanish-related movies after school, and that would just be kind of a, you know, a voucher or a donation for the cause of preparing for the trip. And then we discussed making bracelets, maybe colors of different Spanish-speaking countries, or related to the theme of the weekend, which is Central America. So those are our different fundraising ideas. I do, I'm well aware that we are going to need some scholarship money for students. We will require that students and families participate with sincerity in at least two of these fundraising options. We know that giving them choice will hopefully yield the biggest, yield more success and more money. But I have contacted Financial One, they are willing to commit two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I just got the check today. And then the Columbia Heights boosters are also willing to contribute one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And that was approved at the booster meeting last week, pending board approval. So I've wanted to, to take this trip with students for, for many years, and I feel that now that I've gained a few years of experience in the district and just have a great group of eighth graders this year that are, you know, I kind of shared with them a little bit about the trip and told them that, you know, it was just an idea at this point, but they seem very interested and very willing to fundraise. I have students asking if they can be on the fundraising committee, and I said, if we get it approved, yes. So if there are any questions, I would love to answer them.
Questions, comments?
Sounds like a great opportunity.
Yeah, does, um, do we know who the students are, or?
Um, not yet, because I wanted to get it approved first. It's kind of, you know, tricky knowing what to do. But I do have fifty-one students interested, just based on a first-round poll. So, variety of students between my two Spanish I classes.
So no problem filling up forty slots?
No. And, and the commitment would not need to be made until the deposit, there's a fifty-dollar deposit that is included in the price. So we, if we ended up with thirty-five students or something, we wouldn't be responsible for the remaining cost.
Okay. All right. Well, sounds like a good thing to do. All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in. Next on our agenda, the board will be presented with information on new courses for 2014, 2015 school year, and we have Dwayne telling us about new course at Columbia Academy.
Yes, Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. I, I know every year we come about this time with our proposal for new courses, and some years we've come with a, a long list. And this year, there's really just one. And so, wanted to bring that to your attention and talk to you about the reasons for this proposal. It actually is more of a change to the, what we're calling it, based on the reality of the course. We have a, a very, I think, interesting course that takes place in our MacLab at Columbia Academy called Media Arts, taught by our teacher Julie Fowler, art teacher Julie Fowler. It's a place where kids create all sorts of interesting art using computer. The focus of that, though, is really on that, is on arts. And so because of that, we really feel that the, the name really should reflect that. And at the high school where this course is continued, in its, in its next level, we call it digital art. And so, our proposal is to change this from media arts to digital arts, that we have this as a course that, over time, has really evolved into a full-blown art class, as opposed to a course where kids are really walking out of there with the main goal being technical skills. And so that change allows us, again, to make sure that that is clear to all parties, including MDE, who looks at our lists of courses, and make sure that we are continued to be reminded that there's an alignment here between this course and the digital art courses that take place at the high school. So our proposal is for a new course, because it is a new name, but largely with the very similar kinds of activities taking place. It's our only course proposal for you this evening, and so we bring that to you for, for your approval.
Questions, comments for Dwayne?
We, when we were on our tour, we saw the, the media center, and I know, one of the things that Principal Bustman pointed out was that they make all of the flyers and posters for all of the events that they have, and they were really quite good. You know, I was, I was extremely impressed. I mean, they definitely did not look like they came out of a middle-school atmosphere. They looked much more professional than that. So I think that they're doing a wonderful job with their programming over there. And the change of the name, I guess it makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, they do do some amazing work. Ms. Fowler does a nice, very nice job with them.
Very mature.
Yeah.
I also think one of their projects, we're designing the banners in front of Columbia Academy.
Yes, they did help, yeah. They helped with that as well. Yep.
Seems to make sense, Dwayne.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is, the board will be provided with information on the levy certification, and we have Bill Holmgren.
Chair Bardell, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight I bring you updated information on our, on our levy for pay two thousand and fourteen, which is for our school year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. I apologize that I was not able to attend the, the meeting when you got this original information back in September, but at that time, you were told that, you know, it takes a few months for everything to kind of iron out and shifts around a little bit. That's why we asked you to levy the maximum at that time. So any adjustments that are made, that everything's included now. Now really, nothing really has changed. I mean, there's some small adjustments that have happened, but really our numbers totally are still in the same. And I want to just touch on enrollment again, because this does drive some of the formulas in our levy. And again, now in two thousand and fourteen, we're seeing some increase in our, in our enrollment. This is primarily at the elementary level. We're very excited about that, because it really does drive some revenue for us on a yearly basis. Just to have you look at what's happening with enrollment, you'll see that now we are up to, right now, about thirty-one-hundred students here in our, in our buildings, and we're seeing a one-and-a-half percent increase in this current year. Talk about our net tax capacity in, in our district, and what's happened to it over the last few years. As you know, back in two thousand and eight, when the economy kind of, you know, really hit, hit negatively, you see how we saw some negative numbers as they look at our total property value in our district. And we're still seeing that decline a little bit. And remember, this, this all, this, when we put our levies together, because we don't have the hard numbers from the county yet, that you, you'll see the numbers here are about a year lagged all the time. So you see, here we see about a ten percent decrease in two thousand and twelve. We're not seeing that much of an increase in our new numbers, but they aren't final yet. Sales ratio. Now this is the number that the, well, it's really the Department of Revenue put out. When, when the county looks at your home, and they look at what the county's got to appraise at, and then they look at what houses are selling at, they put a sales ratio in, because most of the time, what's happens is you can sell your house for more than what the county's got it appraised at. And because of that, they say, well, we really should be taxing you on the higher value, so you should pay the higher tax. And that's what this is about. But you see that we're actually seeing that decline again. So now, where you can, what your house's value at is only, is about ninety-five percent of what's going to be sold at. And that's getting closer. If you look back in two thousand and seven, it was at eighty-nine percent. So we're starting to get closer to those numbers again. So most houses now that are selling are higher than the appraised value, which wasn't true back in oh-nine and two thousand and ten. Anyway, then we get to an adjusted number. So they take the, the net tax capacity, use that sales ratio to adjust the numbers. We use CEALSD in two thousand and twelve, that we had a total overall decline of almost five percent in our property values. I'm going to quickly run through these numbers. I think the big, the big piece to look at is we're seeing a decrease in almost every category of our levy going into two thousand and fourteen, and we'll, I'll touch on some of the reasons why. First of all, right here, remember there's a new location equity levy. And because of that, there's, you know, here, you'll see that under referendum, you see that last year we had a levy of three-point-one million dollars. And you'll see it shifting over, even if you add the two loca, the location revenue and the revenue and the referendum together, you say, well, wait a minute, that's only two-point-three million, and you said you'd, we'd have the same amount. Well, we do have the same amount, it's just the levy's less. The other piece all comes back in aid. So we still do have the full, the full, over three-point-one million. But it's a huge decrease for our levy. So you can see that in our general fund levy on the bottom, that we're seeing a decrease of seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars, which is great news for our taxpayers. And we look at just the designated area. Here we had integration. Actually, integration has fallen quite a bit. We have a lot new, a lot of new revenue in our integration, but our levy has fallen considerably. It's almost all, almost all aid at this point. So we're seeing this huge increase, but a decrease in the levy. Safe schools, this is the money that we use for our, our liaison officers and our, some of, and our security officers. Now, this number is up a little bit, and that's based on formula. The, the safe schools intermediate, that's the money that goes to nine-sixteen for their crime levy piece. You see the career tax about the same. And then one thing to note here, the facility and equipment, if you remember, we sold capital facility bonds for the new facade at the, at the Columbia Academy in the drive. What happens here is we shift the levy from capital over to, over to the debt service, and I'll show you that in a minute, where you see it as a positive levy in the debt service, but it's a wash. So we're making the payments from the capital dollars, and it's not being levied to our, to our taxpayers. But as you can see, overall, our designated, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight is a negative number, so we're that much less levy for next, for two thousand and fourteen. We look at operating capital. Again, you'll see, right in the top line, you'll see that, you'll see a negative one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. That doesn't mean we have that many dollars less, we have more aid. So, great news. Health and safety, we do have some less projects, so you're seeing a decrease there. That's mainly because we are doing less projects than we anticipated. Last year, we had a pretty large negative adjustment. So you, the one-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand add is just because we're not, we don't have a decrease there anymore. Our deferred maintenance, approximately the same, and that's based on formula. Anyway, overall, even on our capital, we're seeing a very small decrease, but it still is a decrease. I'll move on to community ed. Community ed, same story on the top line. You'll see that we have a smaller basic levy. Still, the total overall is the same. This, we're getting more aid. Same with the early childhood. The piece that's a little different here is our school age care. We're seeing quite an influx or an increase in the special education students who are in that school age care program after school. So that's why you're seeing some of the costs go up there. This is, we've seen it go up the last two years, and we're kind of seeing, I don't think we're going to see a big change next year. So although we see an increase here this year, I think it'll stay pretty flat going forward with the students that we, we are seeing in that program. So the only place in levy we are seeing an increase is here in community ed, five-one thousand, but overall, I mean, you look at, at the total number, that's a very small, small increase. And here is debt service, two, two pieces happening here. First of all, you see the top line, a very large decrease. And if you remember right, that when we sold bonds a year ago, we talked about the better interest rate that we receive from those bonds. This is a direct relationship to that. We are, we still had the same amount of dollars borrowed, but we're, we're paying less on interest, so we're levying less dollars to make those payments. And then here, you see the capital facility bonds again. Here is where the money comes to the debt service fund to make those payments. Debt excess, we see a negative there every year. And what that is, because we don't know if everyone's going to pay their taxes every year, the, the MDE allows us to levy one-hundred-and-five percent of what we need. And at the end of the year, if we didn't need it all, then we give it back, and that's what this is. Okay? So, overall, in debt service, you're seeing a negative three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. And then overall, then you'll see in the general fund, that negative eight-seventy-five is about a fifteen-point-four-four percent decrease in our levy. You see the increase there of five-one thousand in community ed, and then again, a decrease for debt service. Overall, our levy for pay two thousand and fourteen is actually over a million dollars less than the year before. And I, we talked about a fourteen percent decrease, well, it's thirteen-point-five-nine, so very close to fourteen percent decrease. And two weeks from now, when we have our meeting, we will have a hearing on the tax levy at that time, and I'll ask for you to accept it at that time. Any questions?
Questions for Bill?
That's just a lot of work.
Okay, it gets kind of busy, a lot of numbers on the screen. But I, I did include the detail, too, in your, in your board pack.
I guess just a comment that, you know, it makes sense to, to put more money into community ed, into preparing preschoolers, just tying it back to our last presentation. So it's probably money well spent.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Next on our agenda is a first reading of some board policies. Policies are four zero one, equal employment opportunity, four zero three, discipline suspension, dismissal of school district employees, four zero five, veterans preference hiring, four zero six, public and private personal, personnel data, excuse me, four zero seven, employee right-to-know exposure to hazardous substances, four zero nine, employee publications, instruction materials, inventions and creations, four fourteen, mandated reporting of child neglect, physical or sexual abuse, four seventeen, chemical use abuse, four eighteen, drug-free workplace, drug-free school, four nineteen, tobacco-free environment, four twenty-two, policies incorporated by reference, four twenty-four, license status, four twenty-five, staff development. These policies will appear on our future agenda for approval. It is a first reading, and that's about it. Moving on to our action items, our first action item is the audit report, and the board will be asked to approve the audit report. And we have Bill Holmgren, our Director of Finance and Operations, and Matt Mayer from KDB. And the board will be asked to approve the audit report, and we have Bill Holmgren, our Director of Finance and Operations, and Matt Mayer from KDV. And this will be a synopsis or a presentation that we all heard at the work study.
Chairman Bardell, members of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Yes, we are going to give a summary of what we talked about in detail last week at our work session. I again have Matt Mayer here from KDV to give you the presentation of our audit for fiscal year 2013.
Thanks, Director Holman. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for the invitation to present again tonight. As you indicated, we went in depth about a week ago at your work session, and I just want to pull a few of the highlights from that presentation for the public tonight. Some of the highlights of the results of our audit, and some of the highlights as far as the financial performance of the district for the year. I'm offering three reports related to our audit this year, and all three of them were the best that I can give you. The first report is a report on the financial statements. We're basically evaluating the accuracy of the financial statement presentation. It's an unmodified report, and that means that any member of the public can look at the comprehensive annual financial report of the district and be assured that it is a true picture of the district's financial position. We also did a compliance test on the federal funds received here at the district during the year, child nutrition Title I and Title II, and happy to report no findings when it came to that, compliance with those three programs for the year. And finally, Minnesota LEO compliance report to make sure the district is complying with state statute as it applies to school districts, and again, no findings there. So three reports, three of the best we can provide the district. Quick look at the budget. Your budget called for revenue of 37.5 million, expenditures of 38.1, and a budget decline in the fund balance of about $552,000. Revenue was actually better than anticipated for the year, about $574,000 better. Targeted services and the special education aid came in better than anticipated, so on the plus side of the ledger, that was the case. Spending for the year was over budget by about a million dollars in the general fund. Transportation costs were significantly higher because of increased enrollment during the year. That increased enrollment also drove some additional elementary staffing, and then some capital needs occurred in the general fund during the year as well. So while over, we understood from an audit perspective the reasons for the variances from the budget. Ultimately, fund balance did decline about a million dollars in total, but as you'll see in a little bit, most of those were capital-related spending, and not a lot of it actually hit your discretionary part of fund balance. As Director Holman indicated, the district has seen significant growth in the last few years. We're at a five-year high as far as residents that are being, public school students in the district, and then also the number of students that you're serving. Through open enrollment, non-residents can come into the district, and also, eurozens have the opportunity to leave the district for another district, but making great strides when it comes to the gap there, and ultimately, again, serving the highest number of students in the most recent past. That has a significant impact on the financial health of the organization as well, and the revenue that's generated, because most of your funding, whether it be operating referendum or general education aid, is based on your student count. The numbers here show the general fund operations for the last five years. In the 2013 column, you're seeing the same numbers that we looked at. Ultimately, fund balance did decline from 5.8 million at the beginning of the year to 4.8 million at year end. But the one number I want you to look at is the unassigned component of the fund balance, the top line and the bottom chart there. That's truly the financial health of the organization. After accounting for all the reserves, all the set-asides of the state mandates, you're going to see that the unassigned or the discretionary part of fund balance didn't decline significantly. About a couple hundred thousand dollars of that million-dollar decline. Basically, what the district did is spend down dollars that were set aside for capital. You see the operating capital item went down about $400,000, and some of the other categories related to maintenance and the like were where the spending occurred during the year. So most of the decline in fund balance was related to one-time capital needs and spending down of reserves that needed to be spent for that particular purpose anyway. This chart has been a rather pessimistic outlook the last few years that I presented it, but much more optimistic now. The fund balance is the green bar on top, that is the financial health of the district. That's the number you as a district can control. The challenge has been the last few years, the cash flow aspect of it. And the state has held back funding from you or financing from you, the cash that you receive from the state at various levels throughout the year. The low point was in 2012, where they were borrowing a significant amount of your property tax levy against their IOU to you, and also, holding back about 35 cents on the dollar and paying that after the school year was over. That puts significant pressure on the district, even though the district had a reasonable and comfortable fund balance at the end of the last year. The news is better. You probably heard that in October, that the financial outlook for the state is much better. They're going to start paying you at a 90-10 ratio for the 2014 fiscal year. It was up to 85% for 2013, and also start paying back some of that borrowing that they did on your property tax levy as well. So that's going to take significant pressure off the district from a cash flow perspective. The last few years, you've had to go out for cash flow borrowing. We anticipate that the magnitude of that will be significantly reduced, if not eliminated, for the, the near future for the district. A quick look at your financial health. You ended the year with about a 14% fund balance, which is in line with your fund balance policies. It's a little bit lower than some state averages for all districts statewide and your peer group when it comes to districts your size. But again, based on your internal policies, it's right in line with where you want to be. In fact, a little bit on the high end of where you have established your internal fund balance goals for the year. Finally, the food service fund had a very good year, $136,000 surplus built on its fund balance, up to a $388,000 surplus. That fund had significant changes, new federal mandates during the year, and actually was on the plus side for you, some additional funding as a result of implementing some of those federal mandates. And finally, the community service fund. This fund is a conglomeration of a lot of different activities, ECFE, school readiness, all the community education programs fall into here, and they're presented in one fund together. It ended the year after some spending down of fund balance with about $156,000 in reserve. All the components of that, those individual programs that I mentioned, all were in a positive position. So that indicates to us that the fee structure, the aid structure, the levy structure, the revenue stream associated with all those programs is appropriate to cover the cost of doing business in that fund, so we don't have any concerns there either. So I think a very solid year financially for the district, a good report when it comes to our audit results, and I will leave it at that. If there's any questions prior to your acceptance, I'd be happy to stay as long as you have them.
Questions?
Just one quick question. We mentioned, you mentioned at the work session that the only real criticism I think you had was segregation of duties in the finance department. Is that a serious issue, or what's your comment?
We have it at a mid-level finding, and there are three levels of severity that we can have for that particular comment. The highest level is a material weakness, the second level is a significant deficiency, and the third level is just another or lower-level deficiency. We have it at the mid-level. So it's serious enough to report in writing each year, but it is not at the highest level. And just to give you some perspective on that, if it was at the highest level, I would ask the board to consider the cost-benefit of additional staff to resolve the issue, because there would be cost-benefit in basically having additional employees to make sure that the controls were in place to satisfy that. And as a result, you would get real dollar savings when it comes to that. Because it's at a mid-level finding, and the reason that it's at a mid-level finding is I believe you probably have reached that point where the cost-benefit may not be there. My evaluation of that particular criteria is at a fairly high level and doesn't take into account the cost-benefit. It just takes into account the actual operation piece of it. But you as a district, consciously or otherwise, have probably made the decision that the cost-benefit isn't there. Bringing on an additional salary at, say, $50,000, $60,000 a year, probably you're not going to get $50,000, $60,000 of controlled benefit. And we understand that, but at the same time, it's a significant enough issue where we're going to provide a finding on that each year. Just remind you of that each year, so you can continue to consciously make that decision as opposed to taking it for granted.
So just, so the controls could be better, but it's not to the level of high concern where we need to be concerned?
I think the district does a good job, and the members of your finance team do a good job in establishing mitigating controls. I'm looking for basically four touches or four looks at every transaction, whether it be payroll, whether it be cash receipts, whether it be payments to vendors and the like. And you're going to run out of individuals upstairs there in your finance department with, having four touches on everything. What they do, they segregate their duties, they shift their duties around to get as many eyes on it as possible. Sometimes we end up with two, sometimes three, but not, again, to maybe my, what I might say utopian expectations would be of you. And that's, it's a pretty high level that I have of you. It's the same level that I would have if I'm working with a district of 30,000 students, if I were to have, working with a district your size. So size is probably a big factor in it, and smaller organizations such as yourself are ultimately going to probably end up in this range each year, and you're going to have to make that cost-benefit decision. I would recommend on an annual basis, and again, make it sure it's a methodical and conscious choice.
Yeah, we did have a big problem with that several years ago, and I just don't want us to fall back into that, that issue again.
All right, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to move this forward?
Second.
Motion by Tad, second by Laura. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is teacher evaluation and peer review process. Board will be asked to approve the new teacher evaluation and peer review process, and we have Michelle DeWitt, Lindsay Bennett, and Mr. Coleman Nemmerer. Welcome.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Again, tonight Diane Scully couldn't make it, so we're honored to have Coleman here instead to take her place. We have, we're going to go through the teacher evaluation and peer review process. This has been a, over a year-long process that started with Superintendent Kelly, myself, Michelle DeWitt, and Diane Scully attending MDE conferences about it, and then committing to a subcommittee, which is now met and agreed upon a process. So the rationale is, in the 2012 teacher evaluation statute, a school board must, a school board and exclusive representative of the teachers must develop a teacher evaluation and peer review process for probationary and continuing contract teachers through joint agreement. The process must meet legislative guidelines, and the district must begin using the evaluation for the 2014, 2015 school year. So this is all under statute 122A40. If we don't come to a joint agreement, which we have come to a joint agreement, we would have to go back to the default model, which, if you go to the next slide, both Education Minnesota and MDE are saying you don't want to go to the default model. And I was just at a conference a couple of weeks ago, and Education Minnesota presented, and again, they're saying, "Come to a joint agreement. Don't fall to the default model." The Teacher Evaluation Task Force, it was people from administration and the teachers' union. It was chaired by Principal DeWitt and Diane Scully. We met seven times between April to September. Again, there is agreement in this committee on the teacher evaluation process, the individual growth and development plan, and the peer review process. And in addition, Local 710, the teachers' union, did vote, and they do agree with what we have recommended. And I just wanted to point out before I pass over to Principal DeWitt, that the process was in line with the district's core values. It was a very respectful group. We collaborated innovative in what we had to do, and I'd say we got to yes pretty quickly compared to other districts. They're still struggling to figure things out.
All right, so again, a review from the work study in October. The criteria for our plan is for continuing contract teachers, we would have formative evaluation in years one and two, which includes the individual growth and development plan, including goal-setting, self-assessment, data review, and peer review. And in year three, we would have a summative evaluation, which is the current system that we're using, Pathwise Evaluation System, completed by a school administrator. Plus, in addition, we would have the individual growth and development plan and all of the components of year one and two. It is important to note that in the Pathwise Evaluation System, there are four domains. Domain one is the lesson planning side, or planning and preparation. Domain two is classroom environment, so looking at the makeup of the class, how the teacher establishes rapport with the students. The third component is instruction. So again, it's delivery of the lesson, as well as communication with students, that mutual respect that occurs when this, when the teacher is teaching and the students hopefully are learning. And the last domain is professional responsibilities. In professional responsibilities, this is staff development. It's the teacher collaborating with other colleagues. It's the teacher collaborating with parents. It's important that the teachers have parent engagement, so it's looking at whether they're sending out newsletters, communicating via phone call, email, et cetera, with parents. It's also looking at whether or not the teacher is gaining professional development, either within our school or outside of our school district. For probationary teachers, it's very similar to tenure teachers. However, aligned with state statute, probationary teachers do have a summative evaluation in years one, two, and three. So they will have a summative evaluation three times per year in each of these years, as well as an individual growth and development plan, and all of the components that you saw with the tenure teachers. Training for the new plan will occur in August of 2014. We'll have to do very specific training on how to use the individual growth and development plan. We will also need to train, or joint training of the peer reviewers, who will be hired in winter 2014. So the training will be both in district as well as Department of Education training that's required under statute. So the next steps are, tonight we will seek board approval for the teacher evaluation and peer review process as presented in accordance with Minnesota statute 122A40. We will have training, a training committee is established and will begin meeting in January 2014. We will hire peer reviewers and train them, and we will also train the staff on the new individual growth and development plan and the peer review process during the workshop week 2014, 2015 school year. Any questions?
Laura?
Yes, now, are you going to be piloting this with a small group to see if there's any areas to, that need to be worked on? I mean, the process is wonderful. I mean, you summed it up in just a little tiny, I mean, we had lots and lots and lots of background on this. There's a lot of work that went into that, but are you going to pilot it?
There was quite a bit of debate about piloting this school year, or waiting until next year. So our, our committee recommendation actually before our task, it's really a task force. We had a task force made up of administration from the district, some principals, teachers, representing each of the schools. And our final recommendation was that we do next year as really a large-scale pilot, and that we meet again in spring of 2015 to really collect information about what worked well and areas that we need to tweak. We're not locked into this plan with the Department of Education. This is an internal plan that we're approving, and so certain modifications, either to the individual growth and development plan, the student survey aspect, engagement or data could be tweaked. But we feel that if we collect evidence on a large scale, we'll have better representation of all of the teachers to, rather than trying to pilot with 10 and then make modifications based on what 10 people think, compared to, we'll collect information from 300 people and make modifications based on kind of the need of the whole group.
And I think the other point too was just, we have to get the peer reviewers hired, and we just don't want to rush it this spring. And so by the time we get everybody hired and get people trained, it'll be the end of the school year, and teachers are busy too. So it's one less thing on their plate too.
Okay, so if, I'm always assuming that, you know, no matter how well you prepare, that, you know, that something is going to come up. Now, how, how, will you be able to make those changes on the go? Or will you need to have some sort of a policy change or action by the board to be able to make? You'll be able to handle all that yourselves?
Right. I, I've tested the individual growth and development plan. It works, all of the boxes that people need to write in work. And I did a model plan already, and we'll, we'll actually bring teachers in as part of the training into either a lab setting, computer lab setting, or possibly in the community room with laptops. And we'll actually, in, at the training, begin the process of working with them in this year one. And then all of the pieces that we're rolling out, it's really nice, because we're keeping the main evaluation system, so we will not need to train the teachers on that piece.
I guess my question is, is the, with the points of contact with the peer reviewers, do you feel that's enough to give good feedback to? I guess I'm asking both the staff and administration to, to improve the teaching and to give good feedback.
Yes, we actually established minimums and maximums, and the minimums are- We actually established minimums and maximums, and the minimums are just enough to meet all of the requirements of statute. So, it's the pre-meeting with the peer reviewer, the end-of-the-year meeting, there'll be walkthrough meetings. So, that's at a bare minimum. But really, it was to, it was to give parameters to how many peer reviewers we would need as well as what their capacity would be of how many times they could see a teacher. And obviously, there's going to be modifications made as we progress with this plan. If there's unsatisfactory performance, there's going to be more points of contact with both administration and the peer reviewers. So, our establishments, really, we're looking at how many would we need to do the job that we're doing as well as putting that maximum on that we can't hire a multitude of peer reviewers. So, we needed to establish what would be realistic.
Okay. So, you have some wiggle room?
We have wiggle room. We have a lot of space. So, if there are certain teachers that really want more points of contact, we'll have the space, the time to do that.
Something we're very much looking forward to, a very attractive part of the plan, is that we will have our colleagues coming in, and these are people that we know and that we trust and that have strong educational backgrounds, and they'll come in and be giving us another, another set of eyes on what we're doing and come up with ideas on how we can improve our teaching and our delivery. So, we're very excited. When I talk to people about the plan that we developed together as opposed to the state plan, everyone just looked at me and said, "Well, that's a no-brainer. We go with what we do well, what we've developed together." And I think this is going to be a very strong, strong plan, and it's a very positive move on our part.
Great.
There's one other comment.
Yep.
I guess I would, I really commend you for all the work you put into it. The only thing I would like to see is, since this is between the school board and the teachers, that it would be more, there would be board representation and board input, and there really wasn't in this process, but that's the only thing I would change.
The only comment I would make on that is, we did have a presentation at the work study, and we were able to ask questions, you know, on the plan, so.
But I think at that point, it was pretty much passed by the, by the teachers, so it really wasn't something we could have modified at that point. And that's what I would have seen if we could have done it differently.
All right. Do I have a motion to move this forward? So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Laura. Any further discussion on this? All right. This is a resolution. And let me read the resolution. Resolution for teacher evaluation and peer review process, whereas by joint agreement, district administration and exclusive representative of the teachers in the district have met and agreed upon teacher evaluation and peer review process in accordance with Minnesota State statute 122A40. Whereas this committee met seven times from April 2013 through September 2013, in addition to this committee, the teachers' union has met and approved the teacher evaluation and peer review process, whereas the approved-upon teacher evaluation and peer review process will be effective starting with the 2014-2015 school per Minnesota State statute 122A40. Whereas if the school board and exclusive representative does not agree to an annual, to an annual teacher evaluation and peer review process, then the school board and exclusive representative of teachers must implement the plan for evaluation and review in the state default model. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of independent school district number 13, Columbia Heights, hereby approve teacher evaluation and peer review process developed by the district administration and exclusive representative of teachers. So, all right. Laura, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Landwehr?
Aye.
Mr. Larkin?
Aye.
Mr. Bardell?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Resolution has passed. Tremendous amount of work. We know it was a tremendous amount of work. We appreciate the cooperation, and, you know, the last thing we wanted to do was fall back on the, on what the state required. So, on behalf of the board, thank you and congratulations on a job well done. I know there's implementation to go, but I, you know, based on your teamwork so far, I don't see that as being an issue. Missy?
I just want to say thank you, too, because this has been a huge, huge process across the state. So, I do appreciate all of you guys' hard work and continued, continued success.
Thank you.
We trust you, and we appreciate the things that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just also want to celebrate, celebrate this moment because to have to fall back on the state plan would have been very bad, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You, too. You, too.
Thank you.
All right. District non-affiliated positions. The board will be asked to approve district center non-affiliated position salary increases, and we have Lindsey Bennett and Bill Holmgren.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly presented your board packets, and we also discussed it last week at the work session, that we are recommending an approval of the district centers, the at-will non-affiliated positions, that they receive a salary increase commensurate to what the teachers received for the 2013-2014 school year and the 2014-2015 school year, and a list of those positions were in your board packet.
Do I have a motion?
I would like to move this forward.
Second. Motion by Missy, second by John. Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
Oh, I was, this is, this is fairly common with, with individual contracts, is, is the salary schedules generally follow whatever the teachers' contracts are. So, this comes up quite frequently.
Yep. Ted?
Yeah, I was just going to say this. We have a history of.
Yeah. Me, too.
Of coordinating the contracts in this way and giving the same salary increase, so.
All right. Any further comments, discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are the superintendent goals. The board will be asked to approve the superintendent goals for 2013-2014. And I'm the presenter, so let me read what the goal. Superintendent, goal area one, 21st century learning, is proposed that the superintendent works in conjunction with key district, school site, and external leaders, create a plan which aligns technology to career and college readiness pathways, world's best workforce. And goal area two, communications, it is proposed that the superintendent provides leadership and support to the establishment of communications department and effective communication strategies, both internal and external stakeholders. All right. Do I have a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Laura. Any discussion on superintendent goals? We met with Superintendent Kelly at the work study and went through it, had the opportunity to ask questions.
Comment, if I may. I know when we sat down and we went through this and Superintendent Kelly went through it in very detail with us, and what I like about it is that it's, it's going to be easy to be able to say, "Yes, she's accomplished this." "No, she hasn't," based on what the outcome should be. So, you know, for me, anyway, individually, I like the way it was laid out.
All right. Any further discussion? Yeah. Oh, sorry, Ted.
That's right. I also, I talked with Superintendent Kelly today, and one of the things we discussed is to have, with the communication plan, is to have solid evidence that the communication strategies are being effective, and I really like that. I think that's something that we have been needing for quite a while, and I look forward to seeing that evidence that, that we are increasing our communication with our internal and external stakeholders and, and really telling our story, because we have a great story to tell.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
All right. Yeah, Laura?
One, one other thing here is, is that now that I've been through a couple of these, it's, it's nice to see how the details of previous initiatives and previous goals are really starting to wind down to the last, the last couple of things. So, I'm, I'm glad that we'll be able to see these items checked off the list by this time next year.
All right.
Just one other comment, too.
Yeah, sure.
With the, and the first goal of 21st century learning, with the world's best workforce statute in place now, we have a whole new layer of state mandates that we need to gear up for.
We do.
And so, just for the public, we have been working on technology for quite a while, and that was a goal of the superintendent's last, last contract. But we now have this new layer of implementing that technology to meet the requirements of the statute, and so it's a brand-new challenge that we'll have to ratchet up the technology efforts even more to, to meet these demands. So, that's why I think this goal is, is certainly worthy and necessary.
Yep. Agreed. Any further discussion? Comments? Hearing none. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. Board topics. Yeah.
I said one quick thing. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, I would be in trouble if I didn't mention that I was able to attend North Park had their turkey bingo also shortly after our last meeting, and I promised Principal Jeff that I would be there, and I was, for the record. I mean, I didn't win a turkey or any bingo, but I still enjoyed myself. They had a really nice turnout as well. The elementary schools are doing something right. They had 200-plus people there easily, I'm sure. So, I mean, it was another successful fundraising, I'm sure, so.
Airborne topics.
I'd also be remiss if I wouldn't mention, I was at the play as well at the high school. Thanks for jogging my memory. And what I noticed was that so many first-time students were involved, first-time in acting, and they did a marvelous job, so. And to have the middle school, or Columbia Academies, acting, or I forget her title, but.
Theater. She's theater.
Theater arts. Step up and, and direct the play, just did a wonderful job filling in there, so it's fantastic. I also want to mention that, I forgot to mention that MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association, the purpose of this delegate assembly is to help craft the legislative positions for Minnesota School Board Association, since they also do lobbying at the legislature. So, that's what this is about. It's about lobbying as well.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah, and if I, if I recall correctly, that you can actually go to the MSBA website and actually look at PDF copies of the materials that we, you know, so for the public's, you know, sake, if you wanted to actually go in and look at it, it's readily available there along with quite a few other, other items of interest.
All right. No more comments, so I think we can adjourn at 8:23.